This should be played at high volume, preferably in a residential area.
I did hear that they were coming through Necessary Media.
Because it's necessary. Necessary Media. Necessary Media. Because it's necessary.
Yes, yes, ladies and gentlemen, we are back again. Your hosting friend, Michael D. Olivera, ushering in the Necessary Era every Wednesday here, live on Comcast Channel 95. And if you're watching this on YouTube, make sure you subscribe there, as per usual. Click that subscribe button, we gotta build that up. Now today, ladies and gentlemen, we've got another special show. Every great show is carrying on the tradition here, so like I tell you always, make sure you tell your friends, your family, your grandparents, your uncles, your neighbors. Do what you gotta do, let's spread this around, because the more attention we get, the more I can do, and I got a lot of plans for you out there, so. And I'm loving all the support, I wanna say right now, I appreciate it. I've been reached out a lot this week, and I've reached out a lot to people, and I'm really appreciating the support. But again, we come from a two-hour show to a half-hour show, so I gotta do as much as I can with as little time as I have right now. So, as per usual, again, I think... Intern, somebody at the door? A guest here? See ya! Bye! No, ladies and gentlemen, that's not our guest.
Who was that guy?
Oh, that was The Cable Guy.
The Cable Guy?
Yeah, Jim Carrey in The Cable Guy, classic.
That was Jim?
Yeah, that was Doc Q, a classic.
He's a character.
Ladies and gentlemen, we got four of the city council, Steve Kamara, how you doing?
Okay, Michael D., how are ya?
Pretty good, uh, you know, been busy, trying to do this little thing we got going on here.
Excellent, I feel like I've been here before.
You have, right? You've had a show here for...
Well, I have been here before, that's probably why I felt that way.
What was your shtick here? You had a, was it one...
Uh, we had quite a few things, but we had, uh, I produced a few shows, and my own show was Inside Fall River. We used to visit various places in the community and talk about what they did or what they didn't do, and it was a good stint. It was actually five years' worth of...
No kidding.
...of time here, doing a whole range of programs, and basically reaching out to the community to have guys like you, and... And many others, like CJ and Bob Kamara, and Neighborhood News, cooking shows, all kinds...
There's a lot of stuff going on over here, so I definitely recommend also, everybody keep, stay on the program, check what else is going on, because there's a lot of stuff going on.
And come in yourselves, create some programming.
Test it out.
This all belongs to Fall River, this is Fall River's community access television. That's what it's about.
Now, like you had mentioned, one of your things was connecting with what was going on in the community, that's pretty much what I'm trying to do. Now, my end of this, like everybody out there who is a fan of the show, they'll know that I try to do my best to reach the end of the public who might be not even sure that they should be informed. There's a lot of people who I think a lot of information goes over their head, because it just seems like maybe it's too much, it's too dry, that type of thing. So I mean, I do my best to try to elevate that, to bring in a little bit more of an entertaining fashion, and do what we can to get people's attention, but as far as talking about the things in the city that are going on, we're gonna get into a lot of stuff in the show again, I'm gonna cram it in, I gotta also mention, Steve had mentioned he had to leave early, but I think we've worked it out, we can stay a little longer, but we still gotta cram what we can into the show. So I do wanna get into that, some everything, I'll give you some headlines right now, or some tech, and we're gonna have to get into this whole hot topic with you and the property issue.
As hot as people think it is?
No, exactly, listen, it's there, so the public, some of the public wants to know, some of the public angry, some of the people are just curious, and I'm sure, and you've had your chance on other media outlets, but I also think, you know, maybe you could do more, and maybe there's more questions.
Sure.
Let's clarify as much as we can.
Sure, absolutely.
I wanna get into that, I do wanna get into the DCM situation, we have that going on, um, everything, again, trash talk, we got a little bit of trash talk we can get into, and then, I know you mentioned, and I guess I do slightly, I wanna get into some more national stuff on the show anyway, so you had brought up, trying to bring in some Bernie Sanders conversation, because I know you're a part of his team, right?
Yeah, I'm part of the Bernie team, in fact, at 6:30, that's why we have a conference call, a statewide conference call.
Thanks, Bernie.
So Bernie...
You're rushing me off here.
Bernie and team will be connecting at 6:30, and basically talking about where the Sanders campaign goes from here.
All right, I'm gonna try to do my best to isolate five minutes for that conversation, because I am interested in that conversation.
Sure.
Again, I do wanna try to get into some national things, but we gotta make this show longer, people, so reach out, reach out to people. So, all right, let's get started with, again, we can get into this as we go, but let's get into some of this property situation, but before we get into the main meat of that, I wanna get into something else, my issue, because I live in that area a little bit. Well, I do live in that area, I live right on Rock Street, I was, one of the former fan favorite No Flex Zone Award winners of the show was the road walk that they put on Rock Street.
So where were you, rock and where?
Rock and roll.
What, rock and roll?
Rock and roll.
I didn't know we had a crusty called Roll, but that might be something we should.
We should, work on it, it'll get the new, what do you call it, the new entrepreneurs.
And we have to roll around quite a bit to get around our neighborhood, so maybe a rock and roll to get around.
No, I live right on, near the corner of Rock and Pine, I'm on Rock, but right, it's , I'm all right, but I...
I haven't seen you at any of our neighborhood meetings, you should come, once a month.
It depends, it depends.
Every first Wednesday of the month, if I didn't plug in at 6:30.
How fun is that?
Well, we try to do our best, we're gonna join, in fact, with Anonymous Angels, they've got a cleanup on May 14th, we're gonna join that cleanup, we encourage everybody else to come down to Danforth Street, which will be the focus, but the Neighborhood Association meets every first Wednesday of the month at 6:30, at the Unitarian Church, I have a plugin, it's there, if anybody wants to just remember first Wednesday of the month, call me, I'll tell you where we meet.
I think you've just actually segwayed me very well, because I know from watching certain Neighborhood Association meetings that they do put on TV, I do pay attention as much as I can, I just don't have usually the time...
Sure.
...to get to these things, but I do pay attention. So in doing though, I know one of the, and this is what I wanted to bring up, so, one of the main subjects that happens at these Neighborhood Association meetings is you do have, I believe, the local police...
Every meeting, right at the beginning of the meeting.
One of the biggest issues I hear from people in the area, that has to do one of the issues, we're gonna get into some, but the issues with the properties, I know you've had to have heard about this, in other words, from people saying it to you, the individuals with, why are there so many individuals who complain about safety issues, having to do with the tenants directly connected to your, some of your properties?
Well, so, yeah, let's talk about that.
I mean, you've got issues with, there's been shootings repeatedly, there's been...
Well, no, there haven't been repeating shootings.
How, what do you constitute as repeated?
I think once, once it happened, and it started, as I recall, at St. James Pub, I understand there was a little altercation at the pub in the parking lot, and it ended up crawling up the street, as sometimes, sometimes the wretched do, they crawl up streets, and those who were causing this difficulty came up another block north, into my block, and I did in fact have a tenant who abandoned me, she left, unfortunately, she left a lot of riffraff with her, that were with her in the apartment, so then I had to evict the people that I didn't even select, who had moved in with this person who I did select, who was actually quite good for over a year, she did, she was an outstanding tenant, she relapsed. One thing about living in downtown Fall River, I don't know if you've noticed, but there are a lot of people that are, people that are on the edge of humanity, if you will, they're struggling for survival, many are addicted, many are alcoholic, many are homeless, many are poor...
Crack is whack.
...which is at the core of a lot of what's happening, and why, why I believe that we need a policy in government that talks about income inequality, because there's a lot of injustice, and a lot of the people that are on the fringe of society are people that live in a downtown area. Within a block of my property, and I bought my first house down there in 1979, and I lived there for 30-plus years, in that block, I lived there for 30-plus years, and around me has developed homeless shelters, soup kitchens, halfway houses, youth detention centers, the homeless shelter that used to be Jerry's Place, that was the first place that was there, was Jerry's Place, and it still is there now, called Next Step, I think.
Yeah, yeah, I know there's one of those.
But you know, the reality is that it's a high density of vulnerable people, and once there was a problem with an incident that resulted in a shooting, and I didn't want it to be there, obviously, it was very upsetting to me, that woman moved out eventually, I did successfully evict her, and the apartment took quite a while for it to be cleaned out, there was destruction, as there often is when apartments are vacated, and you know, now it's being occupied by a very nice couple, husband, wife, child, husband works at Boneheads, he's been working there for nine years, and the wife is a stay-at-home mom, takes care of his son.
I mean, because what you're trying to clarify is the tenants that you're bringing in, and that was one of the direct questions I had had from people.
Well, I don't bring them in, they apply.
No, no, I'm saying, in this conversation, what you're bringing in is the fact that you, how your approach is to the tenants, so I'm just, I wanted to isolate, as part of this, is one of the questions I've had is, well, what exactly is the screening process? Because, again, that's some of the scrutiny that's out there, so I figure I'd give you the chance to say, you know, what is the actual process for you, because a lot of the criticisms would be, this is what I've heard, I'm pretty sure you've heard it as well, that the criticisms would be that you're getting X types of property, meaning the lower, well, you're taking certain properties and you're filling them with a low-income situation, so then that introduces the notion of just, you know, the absentee landlords and the scumlord landlords, it puts that cloud on the whole thing, which then, those are the individuals who don't care at all, most of them don't screen. So again, if this is the scrutiny that's out there, what is your, how can you, you know, approach that, what's your opinion on it, is there anything you can clarify?
I want harmony, I want good quality tenants, I want people to pay their rent on the first of the month, wanting to do. I have a simple process, application process, with an interview and with references presented, I seek out previous landlords, I look at not only their most recent landlord, but go back as far as I can to seek past landlords, if there are any red flags that I find of a history of eviction, a history of not being a good tenant, I eliminate them. I'd rather have vacancies, frankly, rather than have occupancy, and interestingly, I did bring some statistics just to indicate, because I know...
Let them off.
...we're gonna be looking at the last four months, because I, like many property owners, and I think, I don't know if you own property...
Are you transitioning into that subject?
I don't know if you own property.
I do not, I'm a tenant.
But I, I know a lot of people that own property, some own a single-family, some own a three-family, owner occupied, some own five or six-family, owner occupied, some are fortunate enough, or maybe not fortunate enough, to end up buying more than one property, they might live in one, have another one where they don't live in it. A big part of Fall River's economic development, if you will, are property owners, we are business people, we don't want, we don't want bad tenants, we want good tenants, we want people who take care of their property, have pride in their property, keep it clean, pay the rent on time, and be respectful, that's what we want. But we don't always succeed, and people, because of the vulnerabilities that are out there, and because of the population that is largely a Fall River population, we have a lot of people that are vulnerable, living on the edges, trying to make ends meet, and sometimes they fail, and sometimes good people fail, and they end up not paying their rent, or they end up relapsing, or they end up, in one way or another, being not only a problem to themselves and to their family, but to their neighbors and to their community and to their property owners, and to their landlords.
Well, I think though, too, you have to give credence to that, you know, whether you should be justifiably thrown in this mix, I'm not saying that, that's why I give you the opportunity to clarify, but you have to at least understand that there are certain, whether they want perfect tenants or not, there are landlords in this community that do not care as far as what's going on with their property and income, like you said.
Sure, but you know, I think what we have to look at is what's happened with me. I bought my first house in 1979, and that's 36 years ago, I did what everybody told a kid from Fall River to do, go out, get your education, come back to your community and try to make it the best place it can be. That's what I did, I went, I got my education, I got my bachelor's degree in government, I got a master's degree in urban affairs and policy analysis, I came back, on the same year when I got my advanced degree, I ran for school committee. I wasn't looking for a lot of money, I was looking for a volunteer position, which is what the school committee was, but I wanted to immediately give back to my community. So I ran for a position, they didn't pay anything, but put me into a place where I could advance and improve, hopefully, education, that's what those four years were about, from 1978 to 1982. Also during that period, I bought my first house, it was a five-family house, I occupied the smallest apartment in that house, and I lived in that apartment or in another apartment on that block for the next 30 years. I didn't just live there and then traipse off to various places, I lived there and worked toward forming a Neighborhood Association, so we could talk about what could make this neighborhood a better place. For six years, we had arts around the block, I don't know if you remember that...
No, I...
But we filled, we filled the block with artists, we had 36 artists on the streets on a weekend, selling their goods, their paintings, their artwork, singing, we had kids, the Buggies, if you remember the Buggies, they were a high school group, that performed right on the same block, I, I'm the one that got the extension cords to make sure they got the electricity to plug in and play. We got the Fall River Ballet to dance at the Congregational Church, we got classical music being performed at both the Church of the Holy Spirit and at the First Congregational Church. We had such an advancement of the arts, that to this day, Perchance Street is considered the place to be, in terms of if you want to go to a place where there's art and music and some entertainment, you know, the Pink Bean has opened up...
Yeah, there's a lot of businesses...
The Tequila Lime has opened up, but we initiated that on a volunteer basis to make the neighborhood vibrant and exciting. I worked at the Y for six years, every morning at 5:15, I'd get up to be the person that unlocks the door to let people into the Y. I was willing to walk the streets at 5:00 AM, get to the Y, open it up, it's only a half a block from my house, so I never felt threatened, and I don't feel a threat today, I walk my neighborhood any day, anytime, any night...
Well, like I said, I live in that section of the community, and I don't have personally any issues with that section of the community, but I also know, like, I think what you were mentioning, there's a certain type of individual who's living there, there's people who are struggling in that, certain corners of that area, there are struggling people trying to make...
Many corners of that area, many corners of that city.
The issue with this, Steve, is I gotta try to ban out as many information as here as we go, so I wanna...
Yeah, that's what I'm doing.
So I need to, what you were getting at is basically, I think that your explanation of where you come from with this...
Well, I'm invested in the neighborhood, I care about this neighborhood, and I've reinvested, dollar, I would bet that for every dollar that I bought, every time I bought something, I put at least $10 back into the property to make it even a better place. Paul Giroux, many people will know the Giroux Real Estate Company on Perchance Street, I happen to have known the Giroux since I was a kid. Mr. Giroux is 90 years old, Mr. Giroux is highly respected as a realtor in town, he has told me on more than one occasion, "Steve, you know what, if it wasn't for you, this neighborhood would have been totally deteriorated into disaster." You have, single-handedly, because of your investments in this neighborhood, because of your caring about this neighborhood, you have saved this neighborhood from being a disastrous place to live and to do business. Mr. Giroux still comes to work every morning at 90-plus years old, and he still will tell you, and I challenge anyone that wants to question my commitment to the neighborhood, talk to Mr. Giroux, and he'll tell you about my commitment to the neighborhood. And I continue to be committed to the neighborhood, and I continue to try to make it a better place.
So now with that said though, this, to put this one subject to bed on this show right now, my point is, you've, I know lots of my colleagues...
I struggle to make some payments.
Where are you at that now, you've taken care of that, right?
Absolutely, and everything, and again, anyone who owns property, or even people who don't own property, I challenge you, I might even ask you, Mike, have you ever been late on a payment?
100%.
For anything? I was late on four mortgage payments, and it triggered a letter that said, "You gotta get caught up on your mortgage payments." Well, you know what, I've been late on mortgage payments before.
So in your opinion, how did this escalate?
Well, it's very simple, I'll give you an example, from January to April, I had $20,000 less collected in vacancies and rents not paid, $20,000, I can show you the facts, anybody that wants to see my homework...
I'll put them up on this...
These are my homework, but I listed every apartment that is either vacant or people who are not paying their rent, people who are currently going through eviction process because they've fallen behind on their rent. That amounted to an amount of $20,000, pretty hefty chunk of change over four months. At the same time, there were $10,000 in bills that I wasn't able to get paid, they happened to be four mortgages, $2,500 each mortgage. Those four mortgages were held until I was in a place to be able to get those paid. I fortunately have a bit, fortunately because of my work, have a little bit of a retirement fund that I can tap into, I don't wanna tap into my retirement fund, I hope to live for at least another 10 or 20 years, and hope to be able to use my retirement fund to pay for food, lodging, my basic needs.
Comfort.
But every once in a while, I'll tap into it, and I tapped into it to the tune of $15,000 recently, so I could get these $10,000 paid, and anticipation, have a few extra dollars in the bank to cover some anticipated expenses, specifically May 1st, property tax. But I can tell you, in the 39 years I've owned property, I have never missed a property tax payment, I have never missed an insurance payment, I have never missed a water and sewer payment, I have never missed any payments, I made a list of all of them, they all get paid, what didn't get paid, and I can give you the reasons why this one in particular didn't get paid, it has the lowest penalty.
Oh, no, I understand the sense of it, but...
And when you choose not to pay something, you don't wanna pay, you don't wanna refrain from paying something that slaps you with a $1,000 penalty.
Right.
You wanna pay, you wanna hold off paying something that has the lowest penalty, it also is due at the end of the month, it's my business, I'm a little resentful, and I tell you, I've had dozens of people who come to me and say, "How dare the newspaper and the media interfere with your personal, private business?" I says, "Well, I'm a public official, this is a loan, this is not money that was given to me freely, I've gotta pay it back at a 4%," which is a pretty good interest rate, "but I gotta pay it back at 4%." And it rehabbed a house, by the way, it rehabbed a house to the tune of a million dollars, I will never sell that property for a million dollars. My reconstruction of that property was an act of love, it was an act of my committing to my neighborhood, to make that neighborhood a better place, I was willing to put a million dollars into these properties to make them better, I will never sell them for a million dollars. So this wasn't about a turnover to see how much money I could make, in fact, I've never flipped a property just to make money on it. I have sold one property that I've ever bought, and I sold that property in order to make improvements on a property that was adjacent to it, and I could tell people about that property if you wanna hear about it. But you know, this is my business, it's now the public's business.
It's out there.
I'm pretty, I would think the public is pretty bored with my business.
It depends, it depends on the subject.
But if anybody wants to know about it, come and visit me, I've offered to anyone and everyone, I'll take you on a tour, apartment to apartment, door to door, house to house, tell you about my dream, it's not over yet, I wanna do more, I wanna make the neighborhood even a better place.
All right, listen, Steve, I wanted to get into some other things, so I gotta warn you right now, this is gonna have to go rapid fire.
Move, rapid fire, let's move it.
All right, you wanted to talk about the DCM, so I do wanna get into about that.
Sure.
Two points I wanna get into, about the actual, where do you stand, again, we gotta go rapid fire.
I'm against private, I'm against privatization, I would do anything and all that I could to derail the mayor in his direction, and I've told him this.
For privatization?
I'm against privatization.
All right, I didn't wanna go directly into that, I wanted to get, no, I wanna touch it, but wait, you just set up my question, someone had asked me that, with you being, coming out because you're supportive of the unions, right, it's very strong with the union factor.
I'm very strong in support of the unions, I believe union workers are the backbone of our country.
Without me going by speculation or rumor, is it true, what I've heard is that your properties are private, it's removed by ABC?
No, I have both city pickup and private pickup.
How does, again, rapid fire?
It all depends on what was best in my financial interest.
At the time?
At the moment, and what was best in my tenants' interest, because my tenants, rather than, you know, they've been, trying to get them to conform to the purple bag system, which I think is a terrible system, but it is the system, I went to a private pickup, single throw process, ABC...
In that same sense, you think that...
For those units.
You think not going private is the best economic situation for the city, that's what you're adhering to?
I believe that public work should be done by public employees, and to the extent that we can, that's the direction I'd like to, I'd say, to go in. Get the best deal that we can through the public employee process, be respectful of that process, there is, I feel from what I know, there's not been bargaining in good faith, I believe that the city employees can match or do better than what the private sector is offering. I also know from experience, the first time I ran for public office, it was because I opposed the city selling the landfill to a private developer, that ended up being a disaster for us, for the last 10, five decades, and I don't wanna see us go down that same route with giving up our trash pickup to a private sector hauler, and then finding ourselves down the road, being tied to that private hauler, or future private hauler, at a price that we can't afford.
Well, off of the DCM situation, so what's your opinion, or where do you stand on this contract issue, and what's being floated around now, the public opinion is kinda not too good on this, as far as the new proposed head of the director?
I have submitted, I'm gonna be a little critical of my colleagues, because back about a month, about two months ago, I submitted a recommendation to the ordinance committee that they establish the DCM director position, in other words, what was left after Ken Pacheco moved into his new position as director of Buildings and Grounds.
You're a liar.
Establish the secondary, because I see this as secondary position, at $80,000. I submitted that and sent it down to the ordinance committee to put in the books, $80,000. Had the ordinance committee worked diligently and quickly, and put that $80,000 into the books, that's what this individual would be offered, no more than $80,000. Unfortunately, the committee did not do that work until recently, and they've given it leave to withdraw, which means they've left it in the books as it is. The way it is written in the books, it's per contract, which means the mayor has full authority to hire this guy, or woman, it happens to be a guy, at whatever rate he chooses to hire this person.
But doesn't this fall into one of the situations where the council has ultimate say over what contract, or what the money, what they handle the money situation?
Sure, and they chose to give my position, which was to establish it at $80,000.
But I mean, ultimately, this whole conversation that goes on where people are pointing blame, would you agree that blame should rest on both sides, or are you...
Yeah, absolutely, sure, sure, the administration, you know, the administration likes to pick and choose what it knows.
I think it goes both ways, that's why I asked.
It knew that my proposal for an $80,000 salary position was in the hopper, it was in the ordinance committee, they chose to ignore that it was in that, rather than allowing it to do due process and get out of the committee, and either get rejected or adopted by the council, they instead went out and hired a contract, hired a contract position, because they knew they could get away with it, because the ordinance books currently read "per contract." I've heard some talk radio people saying that the salary was, the council said, anywhere from 80 to 110,000, that was talk, that wasn't what's in ordinance.
Right, no, and I, that's why I wanted to clarify, but the council does give the final okay, as far as what, if they okay the payment or not.
At some point, but this individual is hired per today's law, today's law is per contract, per contract is contract established by the mayor, and the salary attached to that contract is established by the mayor through his negotiations, as long as he can justify where the money is coming from in order to cover that contract.
All right, I gotta kinda move on a little bit, I wanna get into another issue that derived...
That issue's not over, and I'm gonna do all I can for us to derail it, and I hope this guy, which sounds like he lied about the salary he was getting, this guy has to take a good look at whether he wants to commit to our community, already smudged by his, a bit, by reputation, according to at least what he claims.
I keep hearing noise, I'm gonna have to tell you guys quiet down, I'm gonna have to remove you.
Somebody knocking at the door again?
No, we got people in the audience clapping.
Yep, yeah, well, we...
There's some people with pom poms.
Let me tell you, let me tell you about that.
Rapid fire.
I'm all, I'm all for free speech, I am a big promoter of free speech.
It's necessary to clap.
In fact, I've been locked up because of my free speech, you can appreciate probably spending a little time on the other side of Bos.
What's happened?
But you know, I can agree to do that, because I believe so much in free speech that I'm willing to put myself on the line for free speech.
It's necessary to clap.
And anyone who wants my support, I'll be supporting them in their advocacy for free speech.
So you're, you know what I'm getting at, you're a father of love with this.
I am opposed to anyone challenging a council president in his rulings.
Okay.
Once the council president makes a ruling, unfortunately or fortunately, that is what stands. Just like, as I mentioned, I've gone to court on occasion, and I hear my tenants sometimes saying, "Well, you know, this and that," and I wanna say, "Oh, wait a minute," and the judge says, he bangs his gavel and he says, "Excuse me, it's not your turn to speak." And I have to, and I have to keep quiet, so my speech is stifled, even though I wanna And I have to, and I have to keep quiet. So my speech is stifled, even though I want to make a comment, until an appropriate time. So this is not an issue. Having people not clap is not an issue about free speech. That's an issue about decorum in the council chamber.
All right, all right, I gotta, all right, I appreciate the answer. I gotta move on quick. I want to get into your Bernie thing. I'm gonna tie that into actual, we're gonna go into now real quick. I want to go into the fan favorite No Flex Zone Award of the Week. All right, ladies and gentlemen, this is No Flex Zone, the zone where you do not belong flexing. Steve, you did not win it this week. I want to bring up real quick this week and we'll tie it into, we can get into probably about 30-second conversation about Bernie though. So I run out of time.
Go, keep going.
This week though, the actual No Flex Zone Award winner of this week goes out to a combination. Ted Cruz and John Kasich, because you're done. Like you're done. And the GOP playing this game of just like riding it out and playing a support game, you're done. I want to show you something quick, see if I can try to do this right. This is my graph. It's time for Republicans to understand America people. Get it? Like, just stop playing games.
Was that America?
America.
America.
America. So I mean, let's just do it. Like, just ride it out. Now, that's the Republican side, the GOP. Let's end the show talking, we have like 30 seconds.
Well, I think what Mr. Trump, who I would consider a disaster to be as a president, is in many ways speaking the same language as Bernie.
Agreed.
Bernie understands inequality. He understands injustice. He understands our system is broken. He understands that people need to be appreciated. And go Bernie, go.
Listen, they're different coins, they're two sides of a different coin, but they are different coins. All right, ladies and gentlemen, that's the show. Ladies and gentlemen, we have former mayor Jay Z.
Appreciate it.
Again, this show goes by fast, people.
One bag, two purple bags, one yellow bag, one white bag. That was going in as a complying resident.
The school transportation issue. I know if you want to know about that. What's the actuality to this $500,000? That's all. That's about as much I can with that.
It's necessary to be on that. I threw that out. Should've liked that off.